I'd like to call to order the March 25th, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowan?
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Rozlevich? Mr. Whitten? Whiten?
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss discipline and HIV matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Succession?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, relax, right over there.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Linda, we don't have any communications on the agendas or anything since we put the agenda out?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then number eight on the agenda, we have corrections to the minutes from the January 28th, 2019, meeting. Number nine, then we also have the approval of the minutes from the regular public and executive session meetings from February 25th, 2019. Would somebody like to move items eight and nine?
Yes, I would like to move items eight and nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on either of those two items?
No.
No, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Abstain.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Okay, student representative report. We have a singular student this evening.
Yes, I wasn't able to make it today. All right. So for Bardell, Irving, there's not much news from Irving since last week. For Bardell, Bardell's having an boards assembly and a book club meeting on the 27th. For the middle school, the middle school had its Open Wash, Open Hearts Thursdays last week, and tomorrow there will be a half-day for parent-teacher conferences. For the high school, parent-teacher conferences were last week. The Model Congress team is preparing for Rutgers Model Congress Conference last week, and we wish them the best of luck. We're in the process of being recertified for bronze certification for a sustainable jersey for the school district. Global citizenship students have finished their research and are preparing for their final project. We have a special request to submit a survey to the high school student body from members of TeenPEP. They need the permission of the board as well as certain other processes before going ahead with the survey, which I have all shared with you. TeenPEP stands for Teen Prevention Education Program. This is a group comprised of juniors and seniors that have been educated in leadership and sexuality issues and help educate underclassmen. Playing a major role in the education of the freshmen about important sex-related topics, TeenPEP believes it would be in the best interest of not only the school but more importantly to the students by granting them access to basic contraception. According to Planned Parenthood, among teen females aged 15 to 19, 42% reported being sexually active, and among teen males, this was 44%. Understanding this statistic, it's important to encourage and support condom use among young teens because it is designed to aid in preventing HIV and AIDS STDs and unwanted pregnancy. TeenPEP is looking for funding for this program, which would be discreetly distributing condoms and other forms of contraception in the nurse's office.
Awesome. So you're gonna look into what we can do to distribute that survey?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? It said that there's already been responses, so does that mean it's already been partly administered or like when you go to... I just want to ensure, like, is this a survey that's already been completed or a survey that's...
No, this hasn't been completed. We weren't aware that we needed to seek parent approval before we administered the survey.
Oh, oh, I see, I'm sorry.
So we've... It's currently closed before we're going to go ahead with it again.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, move on to Dr. Taylor's report.
I'm very excited to see familiar faces, including one of our own teachers, middle school teachers, who happens to also have a family here in town. I'd like to introduce Mr. Benjamin, who will go to the podium and speak a few words about a special person who is here to be honored.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Taylor, guests, and members of the Highland Park community who are watching this meeting remotely. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight on this special occasion to continue with a great tradition the board has established, which is to continuously acknowledge students of excellence and reward such students with the distinction of being recognized as the Board of Education Student of the Month. Francis of Assisi said, "Start by doing what's necessary, then do what's possible, and suddenly you are doing the impossible." Each day we live our lives doing what's necessary, and if time permits and we have a little bit more energy in our day, we sometimes do what's possible. When and where do we learn to do the impossible? I'd say that learning to do the impossible starts in our youth. In our youth, we are fearless, we stretch our limits and imagination, and never hesitate to ask ourselves and others, why or why not? Our Bardell community has and continues to flourish, not just because we have an extremely dedicated, creative, and instructionally talented staff, but also because of our incredible student body. Since coming to Bardell nearly five years ago, I have been truly blessed to meet some amazing and inspiring students who do near impossible things. With the over 50 events, initiatives, programs, and activities we provide students and families throughout the school year, it's hard to imagine that even a fraction of these events, initiatives, programs, and activities are engaged with fidelity, but we do it. We are able to accomplish the impossible through dedicated, creative, and instructionally talented staff and amazing and inspiring student leaders. Tonight, I'm happy and I'm proud to be here acknowledging Bardell's Board of Education Student of the Month Award. I'm proud to look into the eyes of some pretty dedicated, caring, and inspiring parents and say, "Your child is amazing and truly inspiring. She is who she is because of you." On occasion, I've actually had the opportunity to speak to Dan and talk to Dan just about parenting in general as a new parent myself and as a soon-to-be another one on the way. And he's given some really sound advice, and I'm very appreciative of it, and by the looks of it, how you're raising your children, you know, I'm gonna take a lot of the advice you've given over the years. So thank you for that. I met our Board of Education Student of the Month when she arrived as a second grader, and I can tell you, it is not a surprise that she has turned out to be the student leader she is today now as a fifth grader. Our Board of Education Student of the Month personifies many leadership qualities many would find rare in many of our youth today. Our Board of Education Student of the Month is like all other students, and she loves to laugh and have fun with her friends. However, she goes a step further when engaging peers and teachers. She is honest, has integrity, confident, inspires others, has commitment and passion, is a good communicator, makes great decisions, is accountable, creative, and most importantly shows empathy. In addition to being a great student and student leader, our Student of the Month is an integral member of our Bardell family and community. She volunteers her broadcasting skills for our morning BTV announcements. She volunteers countless hours to assist our media specialists in organizing the library. She volunteers and assists with cleaning up after an epic event. She has even baked food to assist in our fundraising efforts for class trips and so many other noteworthy causes. Such a true inspiration, and wait until you see her smile, it lights up the room. I cannot imagine a more worthy recipient of our Bardell Board of Education Student of the Month Award than this individual. Please welcome me in acknowledging and congratulating Jahann Maladnik on being a great student and human being and receiving the Highland Park Board of Education Student of the Month Award. Again, thank you, board members, and congratulations, Jahann. Come on up here.
I haven't seen that. Oh, did they? So cute.
So, I'm gonna shift gears. Give me one second, I'm gonna set up my computer, do my thing.
Dan and Rob, you guys could come over here to this corner, you still have microphones.
Ah, perfect. So I had to thank the board and the community directly for supporting my participation in a wonderful conference called Reach Conference that was held in Atlanta. Reach, by the way, stands for this. The Reach organization is solely purposed to bring together well-known speakers and researchers who focus on equity, educational equity. So my intent in going down to Atlanta was to focus specifically on the topics that we have been addressing through our strategic plan, including discipline equity, how to work with students in poverty, our lower socioeconomic student population, how to... Hey, Jahann, can we turn the volume down a little bit? I'm getting some feedback. Sorry. Thanks. And how to help the students who are disenfranchised have a greater voice. So I'd like to spend maybe 10 or 15 minutes talking about what I learned and what I'll be turning to in a leadership team. Thank you. So the conference took place for two days back in February, a little over a month ago. The first keynote speaker was a real kick, poet Nikki Giovanni, who some of us know. If you don't, I definitely would look for her work. She was a smash, a good way to warm everybody up. Participants at the conference were from all over the country, mostly counselors, some teachers, a lot of leaders, principals, one or two superintendents, I was one of the very few superintendents who were there, and then some higher education folks. One of the first workshops I attended was facilitated by the author of this work, Integrate Campbellon. The woman on the right, actually a Teachers College grad, she and I had classes together, it turns out, when I was doing my doctoral work at Teachers College, was a city worker for the New York City School System and talked about the fight to integrate her mostly-black student school situated in one of the worst parts of the Bronx. And so what we did is we dissected her book, at least a piece of it, and looked at it as a case study, and then examined some of the keys to her success, to finally integrating the faculty first and then the students little by little. I mean, as we all know, right now, New York City is dealing with a host of issues regarding integration, particularly with its specialized schools like Stuyvesant and Brooklyn Tech. I'm gonna share some of my takeaways with you in a couple of minutes. One of the things that I really came away thinking mostly about when I stepped out of that workshop was the need for us to be giving people in our schools, whether they're adults, parents, guardians, caretakers of our kids, or kids themselves, especially in the upper grades, a voice. And by voice, I'm not talking about a seat at the table, yes, that helps. I'm actually talking about an opportunity to be expressive, to know that they have a place where they could go comfortably, safely, and talk about their needs. I love the phrase that I took away from the author's workshop, that we've got to focus on figuring out how to transform people's view about the importance of giving voice. There are people working in our school district, including me to a certain extent, who don't realize just how important it is to focusing on giving other people voice. Another workshop I attended, which reflected some of the stuff we're already doing, had to do with implicit bias. The gentleman on the right works with the National Training Institute on Race inequity and took us through a whole two-day series of workshops regarding implicit bias. Here's some interesting takeaways. He emphasized the point that so much of what we do is done subconsciously. We don't even realize how we might treat other people, how we might make decisions, how we interact with people like kids on a level that we just don't consciously... of which we're not consciously aware. If anything, this validated some of what we're starting to do, or what we started to do and continue to do in our professional learning communities, and that is to try to uncover our implicit biases and then realize how they're impacting our relationships, how they're leading to microaggressions in some cases. And then there's a gentleman who I am desperate to bring to Highland Park, whose name is Chris Enton. Chris is a Teachers College professor, about 45 minutes from here, the author, one of the books that I've read of his that is probably one of the more popular is, For White Folks Who Teach in the Hood, y'all. And I'll explain how that all plays into what he has to say. It's not so much, by the way, that what he says in his book and what he said to us in his keynote was brand-new. It was just his delivery. I am working with my partners at Rutgers University, including Ben Justice, Nora Highland, who's the head of the Teaching Certification Program, to see if we can come together as a triad with our district, Rutgers, two departments, and try to fund his appearance in September. So that's my head right now. I'd love to have him help rile up our troops. I love the focus of his thinking. Chris is all about getting past this notion that achievement's only academic, that, you know, you have to see achievement in... and I know I'm speaking to the choir somewhat with our Board of Education, that achievement is strictly by the numbers on a proficiency assessment. If I could somehow get the State Board of Education to realize this and scrap its graduation assessment plans, even if it means getting Chris Enton down to Trenton, I would. He talks about how we've just got to get kids to think about what it feels like to be excellent, to be so, so, so strong academically, socially, and emotionally. You know, fortunately, there's no clear measure of that. We can't, you know, we can anecdotal determine if a kid's feeling excellent, but we really can't measure it, which is probably why policymakers have such a hard time with what Chris is trying to say. But just imagine if we could assume the notion that kids only are academically excellent if we can measure that excellence. What about if we just got them to feel excellent? And he talked a lot about doing these things to get them to feel excellent, to give them affirmation, especially our disenfranchised kids, our students of color, our Hispanic students, not all, but many, our students in low socioeconomic strata. These are the kids who we have to give a little extra to so they feel affirmed, that they are already good and that we can make them feel excellent if we just keep supporting them. That's why I'm so bent on doing whatever we can to focus on our social-emotional wellness initiatives. We have a long way to go in, you know, the big-picture arena, especially with the... in the area of discipline. But what if we just looked at how we can affirm what our kids are about while they're in the classroom? Here's a... I'm hoping my audio picks this up. Somebody asked a question that I was gonna ask Chris. The question was, "What do you do with the educator, the adult in the school who doesn't get that, who doesn't realize that the way he or she thinks subconsciously might be negatively impacting kids' potential to feel excellent?" And this was his answer, and I'm hoping you can hear it, and if you can, I'll come back to it and try to make it louder. Okay, you can't hear it, so hold on.
I wanna turn back to it, so. Hang in there.
All right, you have to listen carefully.
You never let that expression through the end link of the dialogue. That's beautiful. That's just something. And the technical response, the different approach. So if it's, "I realize how much I want something," it's like, well, let's work together, do a friend. It's like, hey, now I'm still real bad at something, right? Then you can... It's like, you have to understand where the emotion is coming from, then you start with it. For those who doubt, people think that those folks who are losing, "No, I should help you for two months," right? Or, "If it's on my part, are you running away? Fine. Are you running..." I didn't say that. If you're running away, I quit. Fine. Sorry, if it's running because I don't have a basic, you could say, "I understand how you feel like it's so much you wanna run away from." And if it was ten years ago, you'd say, "Now let's work on your pedigree to make things better." And so I didn't say it's a whole act today, but it is a... Oh, this one. This one. Y'all have who has it? Okay, good. Who don't have it? Let's go. Look, I'm just... I got four, I got four, I have to pay for each one. So, but we should get it. And I always have to get it to a previous status. And we don't want to say that, and not because of my authority, but because I was very deliberate in the text about the practice. All of this I learned today, it leads to emotion. Your only solution to deal with emotion is with my own hands. And what I taught you in the book, okay, now, you can go there. You can have, you can do a lot different, how you construct a goal. You can let it be. So like, if you go like, what you have, if you need, if you're supposed to teach and learn, that becomes a better way for you. You know what I'm saying? So if you wanna run away, fine. If you wanna slay, that's what we're teaching. Teaching, but teaching is healing. Not just for the kids, but for the teacher. If you teach well, then it heals you. Anybody that had that film before, huh? Whoever has a bit like a lesson, and you're like, "Oh, yeah." You have to break things like, "Yeah, yeah." But just like, some people have never felt it. Some people have never felt it. So you wanna give them a teaching practice for a lot of them, I feel that. Once they feel that, it's true. So that would be my duty response, and there's a lot of layers to it.
Yeah, and you know what he talks about later? He, you know, he says, "Hey, the key to actually having that magical lesson is to relate to the kids." Comes back to relating to the kids, to getting down to them, to getting to where they're thinking, where their head is. So if you're teaching in the hood, you know, Chris will say, "You gotta relate to them in the hood." If you're teaching in an affluent suburb, I guess you gotta relate to them as you would in an affluent suburb. But he says that's the key, it's about relating to your kids and matching their personality, their needs, getting there so you hit them. You hit them on some intimate level. The last workshop I attended, and each workshop is about three to four hours, so we only got to three or four of them, was all about this, understanding how to work with kids who are in poverty. And this was probably where my biggest learning curve was, and I overcame it somewhat. Check out some of these facts about kids, about poverty in general, but think of kids living in poverty. Love the first fact, the first point, that the facilitator made a point to say, "Hey, you know, politicians on the left, politicians on the right, Democrats, Republicans, whatever you are, they all have different opinions, but when it comes down to it, you've gotta think about poverty holistically. You have to think of it not as a political thing, but as a real thing that... with which a lot of data will speak to try to solve." Talked a lot about how, when you look at the research, and the individual who ran this workshop, by the way, Ruby Kane, this is her sole work. This is what she does. I think she's based out in Tennessee, so they flew her in. This is all she does. She spends a lot of time collecting qualitative and qualitative data about poverty. And she talks about, according to her research, the most important thing that you can do for somebody in poverty, whether it's a child, a guardian, a parent, is to make sure that those folks connect with other people who could help them along. Because what she says is, through her research, "Who we know is what we know according to the poverty-stricken individuals." And it's like, I guess it's like that with everybody, right? It's like, it's not just a networking thing. It's a, "Who we know who can answer my question. Who do I know who can give me a little lift if I need it, a little inspiration? Who do I know if I need to borrow some money? You know, a bank, a credit card company." It's... The "who we know," by the way, is not just individuals. It could be institutions, it could be organizations. Unfortunately, people in poverty don't have those connections. They don't necessarily have the whos or the whats. And then, of course, she made a point to distinguish between generational poverty and situational poverty. The first... and I think it's a pretty implicit idea, first being generational poverty. It's one generation after the other that makes it extremely difficult to break. That's a cycle that's really, really hard to break. It's important for educators to know whether the child we have in our classroom is coming out of generational poverty or situational poverty, because then we have to change the way we support that child. Situational poverty, it could be a sudden circumstance. I know of one particular family currently homeless. I know the background of the family, and that's situational. It's something that they're dealing with right now for whatever reason. Lost a job, lost a home. The other things that I'd like to share, turnkey to you, also have to do with the facts behind poverty and how they may influence the way we work with students in poverty. This is really interesting. Dr. Payne classified the different rules, the different socioeconomic classes live with, live by. Now, a lot of us are in the middle class here in this room, so these are the things that dictate what we do, our work, how we do well in work with family, our material security. Do we have a job long-term? Do we have a mortgage we can pay monthly? Look at what poverty, poverty's rules are. It's all about survival. It's about relationships, making sure that there's some family tethered to each other. And entertainment, she was referring to in this case, just day by day, making sure that people, that the family, that people... that people, that the family, that people in the immediate surroundings are positive, are thinking positive, are somewhat happy despite the circumstances. Couple of other interesting facts, check this out. One good adult, a teacher, a principal, a supervisor, a paraprofessional can make the biggest difference in the success of a poverty-stricken child. That's heavy. And I also found these statistics to be of particular note. Look at the way the words we use change depending upon the people with whom we're speaking. What you're looking at, by the way, are in the second, the second to last and the last columns on the right, the number of words that are affirming versus the number of words that are not affirming. What she refers to is discounts, they're demerits, they're takeaways. I mean, if you really buy into these data, it should make us reflect on the words we use when we interact with kids in our classroom, depending on their socioeconomic status. We should be mindful that we may be, especially with those kids in the low SES strata, be using many more discounts than we are affirmations when we're talking to them. And finally, I thought this was interesting, that Dr. Payne talked about the need to rely on your, your gut instinct, your gut reaction to things, your impulse to survive. She didn't explain why necessarily, but she pointed out that's a, that's a reality for those who are poverty-stricken. I wanna sit at my area, I'm gonna shut the projector off and just read a few other takeaways on a list of my notes that I took, and also get out of the feedback loop. So Darcy, if you wanna return, you can. And then I'll take any questions anybody has. There's just a couple of other points. We talked at this conference as a group, and sometimes in group, small group discussions about the need for systems to be put in place to fight segregation, since there is, there is relatively little a district leader like me can do on his or her own to affect holistic change. And, you know, we've talked about this as a board, the need to build in systems, whether it's to, to work through discipline problems, or to desegregate our segregated classes and some of our track classes. One thing Chris said, here's a takeaway quote I wanna share, he said, quote, "School reform looks like freedom." And he talked about the pedagogy of freedom. Anyway, I've got, you know, lots of notes, I took them as they came, I texted Monique a few times from the conference, Monique is our Chair of Equity and Excellence, because I was just so inspired, I really appreciate again the board giving me that opportunity to be in Atlanta with my peers. So thank you for everybody, for everybody's support. Other questions, comments?
So, it sounded like it was a really great conference. The thing that struck me though was the, I guess, the lack of understanding that, yes, one wonderful teacher can make a difference, but that poverty is not necessarily something that can be solved by education. For me, that's a really big one, because it's personal. I don't wanna get into all of the details, but for 99% of the very smart people that I grew up with, not many of them were able to work their way out of difficult situations, financial situations. So I think that there is more there, anyway. I mean, I feel like what this conference presented sounded like it was going in the right direction, but that it was, perhaps I didn't pick up on it, but it's a much bigger, bigger issue, and that I feel sometimes that we put a lot of pressure on individual educators to be, you know, like, the magical magicians that these kids, you know, will talk about in their, you know, their speeches when they're graduating from college or whatever. But I just, I really feel like it's, it's important for us to just think about that, because for lots of people, it really doesn't matter. And it's, it's hard to really like wrap your head and your heart around that. That doesn't mean you shouldn't try, but I do want to be cautious about how much pressure we put on educators.
No, I totally hear what you're saying.
It's difficult to talk about.
No, 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 but it's really important to look at the systemic barriers as well, which is, I think, what you're getting at, is that, you know, it's not fair to put on, you know, a teacher, like, okay, you're gonna be the one who gets Johnny out of that generational poverty.
Same teacher.
Yeah. Because, you know, I went to a education town hall last weekend, and one of the questions that was asked of the people who were there was like, can you name that one teacher who was really inspirational to you? And one of the, one of the person, one of the people who responded to that question didn't give a name of that one amazing teacher, and it was like, they had done something horrible, that they couldn't come up with that, like, one amazing teacher. But that's, that's a lot of pressure to put on either person, right? Like, either on the teacher or on the kid who's coming up through a system that, you know, there's, there's gonna be some savior there that's gonna pull you out of this.
Makes for a really good movie.
Yeah, 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 you know, it's a great, you know, feel-good story, but, you know, it's, we've gotta work on things.
Systems.
Systems, right, exactly.
I was just, oh, no, you go. I was just gonna add that I think, I agree with everything, I think this particular conference, and conferences like these are really like pep rallies in a sense, for teachers who, as Michael Chris M. Dimm's book talks about, white teachers in the hood, who need to get that sort of like, yeah, I know why I'm in this, I'm making a difference. Maybe they did talk about systematic levels of engagement here that affect all the students, but I think the purpose with these sort of conferences is to look at this singular component, right? The one component we do as educators have control over. But clearly, you're right, that it is a systematic concern. I did wanna just talk, ask a question about the possible collaboration between the district and, I know you're just kind of talking about this, to try to bring Chris M. Dimm here. I also wanted to interject though, because the Graduate School of Education, their urban justice program has some really, really strong, they brought in some really strong new scholars into that program, so I think that would even be a good resource for us to look at, to bring in, that's local, that doesn't cost as much money perhaps as Chris, but who would be really valuable in having these kind of conversations here as well.
What's it called, what's the program called?
Well, it's the Graduate School of Education's Urban Justice, Urban Education Social Justice Program. I'm probably not getting the name correct, but.
Google it, anyway.
Their graduate school, their school of education now has a dedicated, you know, urban education program.
Cool.
And so, as a part of that program, they brought in some really high-quality, you know, urban educators, really trying to support teachers who are working in the hood, as Chris M. Dimm does, they don't have his name and reputation just yet, but they are just as good in terms of knowing the issues and being able to possibly come here. Do the kind of, you know, work that you want to see happen here in terms of really bringing that to our staff, so.
Right. And I think it would be great to be able to put together something like that, because one of the things that we talked about in the last year, really wanting to do, was to bring the undoing racism curriculum into the school, but it is so prohibitively expensive. It's just, the money's just not there for it. So if we could put something.
Something else, yeah, because you're right, that we've left that conversation, because, oh, and then now we've lost it.
Yeah, 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 but this would be a good.
We can talk about that in our next Equity and Excellence meeting.
I like that, that sounds like a good idea.
And there was a quote that I found, I looked up the book as we were watching the clip, and the quote that I found was pretty insightful, and I wanted to share it with everyone. It was, the book title, and it's, this is from the Washington Post article that was written about the book.
About what book, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, the, for white folks who teach in the hood.
Oh, Chris's book.
Yeah, Chris's book. The book title and its pointed challenge to white teachers to examine their own practice is meant to help teachers turn classrooms into places that are more hospitable and effective and even joyful for kids who often see school as a hostile place that's disconnected from their lives. So this is part of a bigger conversation about the culture and the climate that we have in each building. And unfortunately, I know from, from being a parent here, that there are many times when my kids have used the word prison to describe their experience of certain buildings at certain times. I think that that's for lots of different reasons, it's not, you know, any one particular experience, but there is not, I would say there is not a sense of joy many times that, you know, we discussed this. So that's just, I thought, a really important thing for us to consider when we're talking about climate and culture, that we're not talking about it because it feels good, we're talking about it because it makes us, you know, an extreme difference to kids who should feel safe and happy when they're here, and that should motivate them to be here.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I actually wanted to just interject a bit. I guess when we're talking about the sort of stuff that you, I guess, learned in the conference, that you're talking about the individuals that can really impact students in terms of equity and helping disadvantaged groups, I think I would like to stress that those individuals, more than any other teacher, I think, are student counselors and school psychologists that help the students in terms of finding work or life after high school. And right now, that's a huge issue in the high school, that a lot of students have come to different board reps to really emphasize is that our counseling staff is really underfunded, and I understand that we already have issues with our budget, but just to relay some of the students' opinions on that.
Yeah, I think this does certainly go back to the larger conversation we were having last week, right? Of all kinds of competing priorities and needs and lack of funding and, yeah. And after a decade of kids being overtested and teachers being overburdened and classes getting larger, it's not having a great impact on morale for teachers or for students or for just about anybody, unfortunately.
Didn't see that coming.
Yeah. Yeah, so we really thank all of our teachers who are in there every day, you know, working with our kids and, you know, doing the best of what is very difficult situations for a lot of kids who come to you every darn day. So thank you very much. We can only imagine what it's like, even being the wife of a teacher, I can't 100% understand what it's like, because he's the one standing there in front of that room of 20 or 30, however many kids, with nine bajillion different needs and experiences and, so, it's a lot. Our kids go through a lot, our teachers go through a lot, everybody in our buildings go through a lot.
Yeah.
And there is no easy fix. There's no, even if we had all the money, there's no easy place to throw all the money to, you know, magically make it all better, there just isn't. So, but yes, I think you're right, that the, should that magical money fall out of the sky, one of the places that really does need to go is into, and, you know, this is kind of something we talked a little bit about last week, and after the meeting, I kind of wished I had talked about it a little bit more, was that, what I wanted to talk about was how the board really is trying to put the little bit of money that we do have towards these priorities, right? Towards having a dean of restorative practices, towards making sure we have a principal and vice-principal in both the middle school and the high school, so we can try to get a handle on discipline and behavior. Putting Mr. Harrison into the, into the school, so we can make sure our hallways are safe. You know, trying to make everyone feel as safe and secure, teachers and students included, as possible, with everybody working with a very difficult set of circumstances, so.
That's my report.
All right, thank you, sir. So we will move on to our board committee reports. We'll start with curriculum and instruction. Shelley, you don't have a lot, and I don't know that you even have anything new from last week, I don't think you do.
No, I don't think I have anything new at all.
Okay. Anything else, did you guys meet in the past week, or?
Not in the past week, no, but, well, there was a conversation that Rob Razlevich started about some of, some of these, well, number four precisely, the English 11 with honors option. And so in an email discussion, just the three of us, I guess, he was asking about why that wasn't happening across subjects and grade levels, but I think more specifically grade levels. So why were we just talking about English 11 with honors option and not other, other levels?
I think the biggest answer is because there's still issues that need to be worked out in terms of, there's stuff that the board needs to work out with the union, there's, you know, training issues, there's, you know, we're kind of trying to do this a bit at a time and get as much, you know, information back from the teachers who are teaching these classes and from the students who are in these classes, so that we can feel more comfortable and confident moving on in a.
That was my educated answer, educated guess answer.
We're putting our, our second foot into the water.
Yeah.
As it were.
Yeah.
With what grade, what would be the next?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's even been decided what would be, what would be next, and I mean, I think a lot of it also depends on, you know, the teachers who are, you know, interested in getting that additional training and, and taking that on, and so, I mean, the hope is that it will continue to expand beyond these two, these two courses, but.
Yeah, I think his question was more about grade level, like I said, so he was wondering if there were any answers as to why that wasn't being rolled out in the history department in other grades, younger grades, and I think that in ninth and 10th, we don't have, as far as I understand, we don't have a tremendous difference between the honors classes and the CP classes, but I could be wrong.
I have no idea.
If other classes are going to be integrated into that program?
Rob was asking whether or not we should be rolling out the honors options into lower levels or lower grade levels of history, rather than crossing over to the English department.
I think right now we're, you know, looking for teachers who are interested in, and interestingly motivated to go here, so I don't know if it's an option necessarily, we're not going to, we don't wanna require other teachers to go with honors option, we'd rather them first come to us and say, hey, I'd like to try this. And right now, Mr. McCray is the individual who's offered to do that, so philosophically speaking, I mean, that's a discussion I could have with Mr. Lassiter, but I don't know, don't think it would change our approach, unless, unless there are other teachers in the lower grades who are interested and be part of this. So far, they haven't expressed interest.
Okay. Yeah, I would assume if they see success, that they would be more likely to volunteer.
Right, and hopefully by the end of the year, we're gonna have another presentation, right, on how this is going in the classes that it's happening.
I do plan on asking Mr. Broadfoot if he'd be willing to come out.
Excellent. Okay. So anything else on curriculum and instruction right now?
Nothing new.
Okay. So let's move on to finance and facilities. Mark?
Yeah, Darcy, thank you. So we have a handful of new items from last, last week. The first one is an item three, the cafeteria bill list, that's from March 9th through March 15th. Item five is the approval of the treasurer's report, and that's the treasurer of school monies as of January 31st, 2019, and that's coupled with the board secretary's report, and that's Linda certifying that as of January 31st, 2019, no budgetary line item has been overextended in violation of the appropriate regulation. Item number seven is the board certification that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year. The next new item is part of item 10, approval of contractors. This is the approval of Title I funds, so that's federal government funding, to the amount of $9,590. It's young audience, young audiences arts for learning, it's an 11-day artist residency, storytelling residency, young audience staff planning and coordination, and it's, in essence, one 11- and Coordination, and it's, in essence, one 11-day artist residency with five classes of 20 to 25 students, and that'll be held in May and June. Item 13 has one new item, which is approval of bedside instruction, and that's for one student at the rate of, a tuition rate of $48 per hour effective March 18th. I think, oh, I did want to point out again, before I go on, our acceptance number 14 of the Highland Park Education Foundation grants. Again, I wanted to thank the, for the board, the HPEF, for a variety of grants to teachers, which we see several times per year. This is for three grants in the middle school, three grants in the Bartle School, and a grant in the high school. So, thank you to the Highland Park Education Foundation.
And also to the teachers for applying for the grants.
And yes, and of course, for the teachers who applied for this. Then they'll, should be more to come. We see these several times a year. And I believe that those are the only new items. I did want to say one or two very brief words about the, the new sets of doors in the school, two schools. We are approving bids, so that we can put new doors at two of our schools. This is a program that we previously discussed for the last year. It's also something that came out of the school safety committee, so we'll be getting more serious entryways in, in security vestibules at, at Bartle School and also at the high school. And this is coming from money which is in our capital reserve in the 2019-2020 budget. So, much as the Title I funding, which is federal money, it's not coming out of the tax collections, so to speak, this is also coming out of money which is not impacting the budget for 2019-2020, inasmuch as coming out of a capital reserve, which currently has approximately $800,000 in it, and has to be budgeted and used for capital improvements of the schools.
So, Mark, to clarify, that cannot be taken, we can't take money out of that and use it to say, hire a new teacher?
We cannot take money out of that, except for the purpose of a capital improvement of our schools.
Right. And all this is doing is getting Bartle and the high school to the same place that the, Irving and the middle school are. Irving and the middle school are the newer buildings.
Sure.
This is how newer buildings tend to be built, with this double-entry glass, so people can see who is out there. Bartle and the high school don't have that, so this is...
And I did, oh, I'm sorry, please.
Oh, I just was going to ask, I think I might have missed this at the last meeting. Is it Bartle or the high school that was going to have some sort of a shatterproof glaze attached to the windows that was going to make them significantly more expensive?
Both of them.
Both of them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What kind of expense are we talking about with that?
That's going to be done at a later time. That's not part of the project. We'll be buying the material and installing it ourselves.
I see, that's, that's not part of the $21,000. Okay.
And there are several components to the, to the capital funding in 2019. This is one of them. More security towards a better camera system, cloud-based camera, modern camera system. Also, some roof improvements. Also, with the possibility that the county and the borough would pay for the large majority of the improvements to the replacement for the field and the track, $175,000 is being budgeted for those improvements from our capital reserve. If that doesn't happen, let's say the county doesn't approve a grant, that money will just get rolled over into next year. I did want to make one other thing more clear, because a few of the board members have asked me privately about the computer initiative, both for the students and, and our teachers. That's money that's being put in for, via a lease. It's a four-year lease is, is what's being proposed, and I believe will be done. That will include every teacher, or at least every classroom with a teacher, having their own laptop on loan from the district, a new, modern laptop, and also every student from sixth grade, I believe, to, through 12th grade, getting a Chromebook. The finance committee evaluated what have we been spending to buy equipment piecemeal over the last five to eight years? And what we realized was, if instead of buying piecemeal, we simply did a lease, a four-year lease, we could buy, in effect, for everyone, or lease for everyone, and that would mean that all students would have their own Chromebook, and all teachers would have their own loan leased laptop in the classroom. And this won't cost, if anything, very, very much more than what we had already planned to budget for replacement computers on carts and replacement laptops for teachers whose laptops had become obsolete or weren't working. The difference might have been $5,000 or $10,000 in either direction in a $36 million budget. So, we're very hopeful that this will make for great improvements for both teachers and for students, without, without incurring any extra costs appreciable than what we've been spending for the past few years, for the past eight or nine years.
And the biggest concern was one of the concerns that the board has brought up time and time again, which is equity concerns about how homework is assigned, who does or doesn't have access to computers.
Right.
Students that can't get their work done because they don't have, they don't have access to a computer. So, the combination of students in grade six through 12, having their own devices, and the late bus that we've been able to institute, we're hoping will address a lot of those concerns and make it much more possible for a larger swath of our student body to actually complete the work that they're being, being assigned.
Right, and, and exactly, and as I said last week, if, for anyone who didn't hear, we, we, this came out of board discussions at this table, but also policy committee discussions, where we were discussing what could we do in policy to implement a homework program that made sense for the district? And the only program that made sense for the district would, would be that every student, where they might get a homework assignment that required a computer, would have a computer, because like many other districts in the state, we're, we're going to provide that computer for the students through the lease program.
I wanted to point out that, you know, there was a lot of thought given to just getting rid of online homework, I mean, not by Mark, or by Dr. Taylor. But, you know, there were suggestions to that effect, because, you know, this board has sort of a long-time resistance to spending money on tech, when we could be spending money that directly impacts students, you know, from, well, this directly impacts students, we could be spending money on staff, we could be spending money on other types of programs. However, it just became clear that it was not going to be feasible to outlaw online homework and computer homework, as much as some board members might, like myself, might have hesitated to, you know, weren't that enthusiastic about online homework. So, that's why we're doing it, because we can't have some students, a good chunk of our students, unable to do their homework. You know, it's not, I'd rather not spend the money, even the extra $10,000, but I think that given that we feel the technology is, you know, the way of the future, and, and teachers are very committed to it in their, in their curricula, there really wasn't a huge amount of choice.
And we also felt, we also felt when we did this budget, that the teachers deserve to have modern equipment.
Oh, the teachers themselves, yes, absolutely.
And, and when we looked at the budget...
That was no question.
So, to lease that extra equipment, and, and what were we going to spend on upgrading old equipment?
Right.
It just made absolutely no sense to, to do anything different. And, and we had, we had input from Keith and from the association on this, and...
Right.
Other board members, and I think, you know, we're, I hate to say this trite statement, but we're in the 21st century, and people, I think our students really should learn...
Yes.
If they are, you know, getting homework, and it can be done more easily and, and better as a learning experience on the computer, this is a useful thing.
Yeah, this doesn't mean we want to replace our teachers with computers, or have all online work in our classes, or any of those things. And, you know, I am, I am quite certain that the curriculum committee is, you know, going to be working ardently to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Right.
But, for me, it just, it very simply became an equity issue. It was, it was the simplest solution to a really persistent equity issue that we have not been able to solve.
So, I just wanted to interject really quickly, but part of this equity issue is outside of our control, and I think that everyone listening should make a point of learning more about what's happening in the world of net neutrality legislation.
Yeah.
This is a tremendous part of this conversation, especially when we talk about equity issues, because having access to Wi-Fi is something that many of us might take for granted.
Well, but the computers are going to be set up so the students don't require having Wi-Fi to do their homework.
Could you explain some of that to the...
Yeah, I mean, no, I can't. I don't know how to do that, but that's certainly part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Is that it's, they're not going to be required to have the Wi-Fi to do what they need to do.
That's wonderful.
So, teachers will be modifying the online curriculum, so that it can be...
John says, I think it was Christina, actually, who pointed out that we have some way of setting up the Chromebooks, so that students will be able to use them, even the, like, whole Google Suite of apps or whatever.
Offline.
Yeah, being able to do it online. Clearly, they're not going to be able to collaborate with classmates, but...
They can sit together and do that.
But then also, when the students have their own laptops, and they can be here after school, because now there's a late bus...
Right.
They will have that opportunity to collaborate and use the district's Wi-Fi and not have to go to Dunkin' Donuts, or go, you know, like, or, you know, whatever. So, all that's been, I mean, no one's saying it's going to be perfect, and, you know, nothing is ever perfect, or 100% equitable, but I think we're making it as equitable as we humanly can.
Yeah, I was talking in the broad terms.
Right. Well, I just want to kind of keep us a little grounded. I mean, we can, we can really...
I just want to make sure that we really do a lot of PD, to make sure everybody knows how to use Google Suites offline. That's not evident to a lot of, you know, relatively fluent users like myself.
There is going to be a learning curve, for sure.
I'm sure there is, but I hope that there'll be some, like, direct top-down direction, to not expect teachers to sort of figure it out on their own, or sort of figure out if there's any students that don't have Wi-Fi, you know, that sort of thing.
I have a quick question about maintenance. I know, Mark, we talked about this before, but can you just talk about the cost of a maintenance when you're under a lease system like this? How does that work? Is that budgeted into...
Yeah, for one thing, we've ordered a fair amount of extra machines, which come under the budget, that in effect replace the piecemeal purchasing. So, let's say a mach, well, first of all, the machines will be insured, to a certain extent, by the district. We will have extra machines. We do have sufficient staff now to manage those machines. If a machine gets misconfigured, that can, in the software, that can be rectified by our staff. If a machine literally breaks, we do have those spares that we put into the lease. And again, on a case of a stolen machine, a lost machine, there've been extra machines allotted, so that we have something to give a student very quickly. And I, I, I would, there's a lot of information, a few years ago, we looked at this, and there was very little information about it, and only a few districts were doing this, a handful of districts. There's a lot more information now. So, if you go online and you look at the, the kind of agreements that a family signs when the machine gets assigned to their, to their child, that's been thought through by a lot of districts, I mean, not a lot, but the, the districts that have done it. And we have a very good template, which Christina Nicocia will, has access to, for us to start, to have a starting point, so that we can give those out and properly maintain and, and update and replace machines as warranted. It's not going to be perfect. There are going to be glitches, but this has to just be far better in 2019 than depending on people having machines at home, students having machines at home.
Okay. If everybody's good there, I'd like to go back.
Just one more question for, I guess, for Scott. So, just like Mark was describing how our capital reserve money is earmarked for certain projects and, and cannot be used in another way, can you talk a little bit about Title I funds and how those are, should be appropriated?
Well, I can give you a brief overview. I used to be the Title I coordinator in Little Silver. So, you can only use ESA funds, Elementary and Secondary Success Act.
Education.
Awesome. Thank you. Title I, II, III, and IV, IV is sometimes provided for technology for certain purposes. Your school, there has to be designated a Title I school, or, as we think we will become, your district can be considered, or school-wide, they refer to it as, can be considered able to use those funds. We don't, we're not, we will not necessarily receive additional federal money in Title I if we're district-wide, but it means we have more flexibility of its use. Oftentimes, the target populations are your low socioeconomic students, your ESL students, that's what Title III monies are used for. For Title I, besides low socioeconomic status students, it could be students who the state has identified are lagging on standardized test results behind their peers. So, for us, it's, depending on the school, it's usually your, your students of color, your Hispanic students, your special education students, and your low socioeconomic students. Now, you can't just use time and money for anything, you have to use it for those specific purposes. And the coordinator, who, for us, is Jen Knapp, has to have written in the application what those funds are going to be used for ahead of time.
Oh, so, sort of like applying for a grant, she has to apply for that Title I?
Very, yes. They call it an entitlement grant.
So, it's already been delineated when it goes out to the, to the feds as to what it's going to be used for, and they approve of it or not?
Correct. And there's a lot of reporting. Jennifer has to do a whole report in June coming up, to show that all the money was used appropriately.
And she's the one who's been staying on top of trying to get us approved to be a Title I district, which is, sometimes, you know, we were talking about it a few weeks ago, sometimes we, like, miss the application by, you know, like, 0.3%, you know, and they won't approve it. So, it looks like we're, looks like she's gotten it, looks like she's gotten it across the, the finish line, but we'll see. So, do we know what this Young Audiences Arts for Learning, what, is that a particular building, or?
I believe that's Irving, but let me get back to you on that.
Okay, because it is a big chunk of change.
Yeah.
It's a really big chunk of change. It would be nice to have a little more information about that.
Do you want to table it?
Um, if it's possible without, I mean, I'm sorry? Right.
Why don't we table it? I'll have Ms. Knapp get back to me.
It would be nice to get a little bit more, little more information on such a big expense, even though it is Title I funds, but... Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, we'll table that and get a little bit more information for next month. All right. Are there any other questions on any of the finance and facilities items?
No, thank you.
Okay, so, can we move on to personnel? Ann?
Yes, we can. All right, let's see here. Let me get to personnel here. All right, there are very few new things compared to what we discussed at last, last week's workshop agenda. We have a new maternity replacement hire. This is Cassandra Soranda Sorano, excuse me, at Irving School. I understand that she has been working in the classroom for quite some time, for this, all of the school year so far, I think, in the classroom, where she will be now serving as the maternity leave replacement. So, that's wonderful, wonderful for our students to have someone who's already familiar with that classroom and with their specific students. We're very lucky in that regard. We have a new staff member being added to this list of staff being paid to write material modification lesson plans. Those are, those for students with special needs, Scott? That's personnel number four.
That's right. Which number?
Personnel number four.
Okay.
Writing material modification...
Yeah, that's, hold on, let me get back to it. I'm a little...
It must be a differentiation thing.
So, these are for the teachers who covered a program that Ms. Kloslaw vacated when she moved to Irving. These teachers provided the substitute, we hired the plans to implement.
That's right. I think you did tell us about that, and I just forgot. Hold on one second. We have a new, number nine is a new maternity disability slash childcare leave. I see we have a volunteer soft, I just lost it. Volunteer softball coach at the middle school, Ms. McManus Smith. Woo-hoo! Thank you. May I, may I ask, just as an academic matter, why is that a volunteer position for a staff member? Is that just because she's nice, or... Is that just because she's nice, or why are we not paying her?
I have to ask her. I'm guessing she wants more experience in the coaching field, and this is one way to do it, but we can talk about that later, Ms. McManus Smith.
I just, I mean, I assume this has already been worked out, but I was curious to know why there was no paycheck listed here for Ms. McManus Smith. But I'll leave that to your investigatory powers. Thank you, Ms. McManus Smith, either way. I'm sure if you are paid, it's not going to be that much. Okay, Number Twenty-Four, we have approval of a Source for Teachers substitute for volunteering. Scott, what, I didn't understand what this means. Does this means, mean that a Source for Teachers sub that just wants to observe classes for her own?
And also assist.
Sorry?
And also assist in the intervention classes, since she's a substitute.
So, is she volunteering, or are we hiring her through Source for Teachers?
Correct. So, she's an individual who's on our Source for Teachers approved list, but who also wants to pick up some observation time, so she simply wants to observe this day.
I see, this is part of her education.
Correct.
I see, thank you. Approval of district overnight chaperones, I have an addition to that. This is, Number Twenty-Five is a list of staff members who will be chaperoning various overnight trips. And to that list, for Camp Bernie, wow, it's Bartle Beck at Camp Bernie now, not at Camp Mason.
It seems so.
Interesting, or maybe that's just the sort of title of the program now? It's Camp Bernie again?
No, it's a camp.
Okay, all right. Well, no, no, I know it was, yeah, it was a camp. There's three new teachers to be added to the list. I think, Linda, you already have this, but I'll read it to the record. Three additional chaperones, I'm moving that we pay three additional chaperones for overnight trips. Ms. Stradakas, Andrew Behringer, is that how you pronounce that? And Amanda Yonks for Camp Bernie, two nights at $85 per night. And that seems like not enough money to pay staff to spend a night at Camp Bernie. Based on my husband's experience, it was, $85 was a chunk of change.
We do it for love.
And our husbands paid to go.
Yeah, they paid to go, they paid $150. Yeah, you know, man.
They paid for the privilege.
I had a great time.
Love.
Yeah, you loved it. I'm glad I have boys. I was not motivated to go on that trip. Okay, so, and after that, and that would be it.
All right. Anybody have anything for Ann?
Yeah, could I ask you about Number Three, or make a comment about Number Three?
Is that the maternity replacement?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, we emailed about this.
Yeah, we, we discussed it, and I discussed it with Ruth, because Ruth, Ruth was so kind to point out to me that we, one option for, which we discussed two or three years ago in the budget for long-term substitutes, was hiring them at a fixed rate through Source for Teachers. And we did that for a while, and it's kind of stopped. And I know it was difficult, but we're really in a seriously difficult place financially right now. So, I'm going to vote for this. I certainly wouldn't not vote for this. I'm going to vote for Number Three. But I would like the Finance Committee to discuss it again. So, for Scott and for Linda, at our next meeting, we should put this on the agenda, a discussion of long-term substitutes, because I believe two years ago, we budgeted based on, on, on using Source for Teachers for long-term substitutes. The Board discussed it, the Committee discussed it. There were very significant savings. And again, it was difficult, especially for certain areas, to find substitutes. But we just, we're just in this, we're in the place now that we, we need to look at everything, and this is something we should look at.
I think, I recall that too. I think I also recall that we had brought in at least a couple at, at that rate, who then left for full jobs. So, I wonder, what, could you bring to that meeting, Scott, analysis of, you know, what happened? How many we may have brought in since that time at that, at the flat rate? What happened to them? What was the success rate? And why we would, you know, want to go in a different direction perhaps in the future?
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, that idea and what some other districts do. The example, the example is Edison, which has a flat rate. You want to be a long-term...
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
It doesn't matter.
Annualized forty thousand rate.
You can take it, you do it.
And they're a very large district, they may have lots of needs in lots of areas, and it may be easier for them. But it would be good to know how it worked, why it did or didn't work, and see what the right course would be after we've done it once before.
Could I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So, would you, would you envision us still going out and interviewing a range of people to find the best person and then sort of asking them to contract with Source for Teachers? Or would you envision just going out to the pool of Source for Teachers?
It's the, it's the latter. The former, pardon me, the former.
So, we'd still, like, give ourselves a broad...
So, we would, we would interview people, telling them, though, that this is the, this is the rate you'll be hired at, and sign up if you haven't already for Source for Teachers, and we'll hire you off the list. We did this for a number of people.
Sure.
As Rob points out, it may not have worked perfectly. It was harder to, or well, even. It was harder to find the people. I think, I mean, I would rather do it this way, frankly. But we really have issues, and, and every, every dollar counts. I was going to say penny, but pennies are another story. Dollars, every dollar counts, and every $10,000 count.
So, if there are five of those, and we save $13,000 on each one of them over the court, or, or, or a portion of that prorated during the year, that's a job.
It's a significant amount of money. And I think that year, we lowered the budget line, if I remember, it's a while ago, by 40 or 50 or 60,000 dollars. It was a significant amount. So, I just want to revisit it. I'm not, I don't have a perspective, I'd like to get more information.
No. Point well taken.
And I will vote for this.
In, I'm not sure about the middle school, but in terms of substitute teachers, in the high school, I, we still have them, but it's also done by just putting all of the classes in the cafeteria. So, if you're looking, like, for ways to save money, you'd be like institute that in the middle school.
That was done the same year, as a, as a savings, as a way to have savings. We, the Committee, but I would say really, Linda, more than us, you know, as we discussed it, what does it cost us to have substitute for every class, every time someone is out, versus what many districts did in the past, which is to put all of the students in one place with one or two or whatever number of substitutes? There were significant savings, and often not very much difference, you know, for that, for that one day. So, we did it. And I think it has, it has given us some savings.
It'd be good to know how it's working for, I remember at the time we first discussed this, there was some concern about kids, you know, with special needs and kids who maybe need extra support in large, unstructured social environments. It'd be nice to know if there have been any incidents, or if we've been able to put parent support in there, particularly, I don't know if this is just at the high school, if it's done in, just at the high school. Still, it would be good to know if there, if there, could we find out about that?
Actually, it brings to mind another totally, well, partially related question, related to Source for Teachers itself, in terms of how well we are actually doing, bringing in, filling openings that exist during a school day. Let's say we have 10, or 15, or 20, and we go out to Source for Teachers, are we filling those? I mean, are we actually, are they doing a good job for us in terms of filling, you know, one day, or two day, or five day slots? That's a separate question.
And are there options?
I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't know how well that's going. I kind of have my doubts.
Scott, Scott, I think that's mostly for you, that question. How is it, how is that going? Do we have any hiccups when it comes to using Source for Teachers to provide us substitutes on a day-to-day?
We still have a problem, and it's still, we, we still daily have unfilled positions.
We do, okay.
My colleagues, you know, we've actually came up at a superintendent roundtable meetings, which is throughout the, the question, hey, does anybody have a really good substitute service? Seems like there, I think that the systemic problem is we, there are just not enough substitutes to go around. One thought that came across my desk, I think it was a meeting I had with one of our faculty, was to raise our sub rate, our subpay rate.
Didn't we already do that?
We raised it substantially.
But to attract, to...
We already did, though.
We did that.
Well, but do it again, because apparently we're not, I haven't done the research, but we might not be in competi...
No, we're very competitive right now. We don't need to raise that.
Well...
We don't need to raise it.
It came up.
Speaking as the substitute teacher at the table.
It came up. And I know that's a difficult question to, topic to bring up during this difficult budget at the time, so...
Scott, I, I did want to give some perspective from 25 and 30 years ago on my last Board tenure, which was that the, the situation of getting substitute teachers into the classroom, which was done back then by making phone calls from a phone list. And somebody was, somebody was responsible, someone in the system, I don't even know who, but somebody in the system, it might have been per school, it might have been done out of the central office. Someone got on the phone and made phone calls the day before or the morning of, and spent as much time as they needed to get the substitutes. It was a nightmare. It came up every month, and, and it wasn't just difficult to fill position, it was, it was impossible to fill positions, and it was time-consuming, and it was labor-consuming, and that's why you have a business now called Source for Teachers and perhaps others, because they make that job, they filled the need. They filled the need that we have and other districts have. Some entrepreneur type got the, you know, got the idea, let's do this, and they did it. But it was, it was worse. It was worse. It was a constant, constant problem. My wife, Nora, who many of you know, was, was home raising kids, our kids, and as she, as the kids got older, she first did substituting and then went back to teaching and then went back, you know, went to the, you know, ended up at the university teaching. And she did substituting, and when she was available, when she put her name on the list with Highland Park as an available sub, we got called every single morning. They could not find anyone. So, it has to be a worse situation. Maybe times have changed, I don't know, but it was a terrible situation.
With Source for Teachers, Scott, do you know, is there such a thing as a, as a hybrid plan where you perhaps, well, let's say we had 10 people on a list or whatever, that would be our go-to people that may not be Source for Teachers, but are certified, where we could use those people as well as the Source for Teachers?
That's intriguing.
I mean, some of those may be local people.
I don't know.
I assume we can do anything we want.
Well, it's our contract.
Yes, right.
We have a contract.
I don't know.
Yeah, let's chew on this maybe next month.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I like that idea. All right, if nobody has anything else for Personnel, let's move on to policies.
Okay, so, so we, we only have the one policy, it's for second reading. It's the suicide prevention policy, which we've discussed now for a month or more, maybe two months or more. And I just recommend, as, as we have this as a recommendation of Superintendent, we've all spent a lot of time on this in policy, and I think we recommend that this is an excellent improvement of, of what we've had. And we are meeting in a week or two, and we'll have some more, I hope we'll, we'll have a number of, we've spent so much time on this, we will spend time on some new policies and have something to bring forward in the next month or two.
Awesome. I, I went through it today and printed it out. I had found just a few typographical things that need to be tweaked. Nothing, nothing that changes meaning or anything, just...
Terrific.
So, I will give that to you. Remind me after the meeting.
Okay. Perhaps give, give it to Scott, because I think Susan has the master copy.
Ah, okay, I'll do that. Does anybody have any questions about that policy or anything else? My only quick comment is, one thing that I, I think we keep maybe not following up on is I think Strauss Azimé is supposed to give us a list of policies that need to be reviewed yearly, and I'm not sure we're hitting all of them.
Oh, we've been following it. In fact, what we do is we set up our agenda to pick away at the audit. A couple of things have bumped our progress, but, you know, we followed it religiously. Yeah, yeah, we've been doing a pretty good job, I think.
Yeah, Scott, Scott's been setting an agenda based on the, the required policies that we're behind on.
Right, because we get the alerts, but then there's also, like, a subset that is like, these you're supposed to review every year.
Yes, yes. Scott's been putting those together. We have a nice list, many of them, I think if we hadn't spent so much time on the, the attendance and the lateness and the suicide prevention, the, that list, many of those items on that list are really relatively simple to go through. I think if we hadn't spent the hour on those, or two hours on those, as opposed to the hour or two repeatedly on the attendance, lateness, and suicide prevention, we would knock those, write through those. And I don't think any of them are very difficult or controversial.
Okay, good. I'm glad that they're, I just wanted to make sure that they're still...
We're doing well with this.
Okay, awesome.
Can I ask about that, though? Are we still, are you still going to alert Equity and Excellence as to the policies that do pertain to equity issues and when you, when they come up through the docket, so to speak?
That's a good point.
We were, I mean, originally, my idea, before I sort of lost track of everything, was, you know, every time we had policies that were coming up, to farm them out to the committees. So, like, if I knew in advance we're going to be discussing restraint, I would farm that out to, you know, but, and then I sort of stopped doing that when I was Policy Chair because I ran out of time. So, that's something we certainly should do.
I will make sure to do that.
I'm sure Mark won't do it.
I will make sure to do that.
I was not a role model for Mark in that regard, unfortunately.
I'm good at that, I will make sure.
Well, it's also good just to kind of share the burden, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, policy isn't, isn't responsible for every single last policy. Okay, Lenink, do you have anything for us for Equity and Excellence?
We haven't met since last week.
Okay.
So, nothing to share.
All right. All right, so that brings us to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. If anybody would like to make public comment, now's the time. You can go up to the podium and just make sure you please state your name and if your resident address for the Board Secretary, so she can record that, or if you're a staff, you just say your staff.
Hi, Lynn Fryer, 314 Wayne Street, Highland Park.
And make sure you write it down, too, Lynn.
Okay, the acoustics in this room are really bad. But I, and I did come with a couple of things on my mind. I guess with the doors, I'm happy to hear that the funding is coming from a capital budget line, so I guess I'm placated about that. But I've also heard that the Home Ec programs have been targeted for being removed, and I, that makes me sad, and I, I don't think that that's really appropriate. I think there is a lot of non-academic, college-bound students that, and other students, I mean, I think these are life skills that all students should have access to, and I understand that the budget's really tight, but I would encourage you to look elsewhere to find something to cut, but I don't envy any of you, so...
Thank you, I appreciate that qualifier. I don't envy us either.
That's it.
Thank you, Lynn.
Could I ask a question about the Home Ec? I think it was a surprise to a number of people. Did curriculum weigh in on that and, you know, what that would mean for course offerings for our students? Is that something that the Curriculum Committee was able to discuss, Michelle?
We did not discuss it as a committee, and I don't think that it was something that was, you know, presented as a, you know, hard and fast decision, but, so I assumed...
Preliminary budget.
Right, so, because it was a preliminary budget, I thought that that would be, you know, something that we should talk about as a committee. And, you know, the, the bottom line is, is that I do feel like we are all on the same page when it comes to priorities, so I didn't freak out as Committee Chair, but I do feel like we should discuss it.
And Personnel will be discussing it as well.
Yeah, yeah. Did I read somewhere or here, maybe I watched last week's meeting from home, that the numbers Did I read somewhere or here, maybe I watched last week's meeting from home, that the numbers were down in those classes, that was part of the reasoning behind the decision?
Not in Home Ec, I don't think.
Yes.
Oh, in Home Ec it was? Oh, I thought it was just the barter classes.
Our numbers went down slightly, but that wasn't really the rationale. I mean, we've, we've had roughly between, you know, the middle of the 50s to the low 60s each semester in that class, oh, actually, in all the classes that Miss Mitchell teaches, including baking and other home economic related courses, so that, there wasn't really behind, that wasn't so much the decision, the rationale on the decision.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the numbers, what, what was the difference?
Yeah, what was?
I didn't, that wasn't clear, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Could you say the numbers again, like how, how much?
I can actually give you exact numbers.
The acoustics are really bad, Scott, it's so hard to hear you.
Acoustics here are terrible. This room is because the room is so large.
It's a gym. So, just to kind of go to this issue of was personnel notified or was curriculum, was it discussed in curriculum, when we're preparing the budget, it, I think we mentioned this at the last meeting, those decisions are the absolute last ones to be put on the table. It's not like we made that decision two months ago and didn't tell personnel and curriculum. Well, I just want to make this clear, because it does kind of come across as committees are being left in the dark or something, and that's just not, well, I mean, it is how it's coming across, so I want to make it clear that that's not what's happening. There's a whole process that we go through over the course of months, where the different building administrators come, where we look at all those different budgets, Scott then goes back to them and says, we need to take even more from that. This is not a process anybody wants to engage in to decide what it is and where we're going to cut. And certainly, as we discussed last week, the last place we ever want to cut is personnel. So that is the absolute last place that we're looking. So, I mean, I don't know what else to say about it, other than, you know, that's the last ditch effort, every single time. And I want to make it very clear that we're not making those decisions lightly or without looking at as much information as possible, without considering every other possible thing first. One of the things I've asked Scott to look at is how many staff we've added in the last few years, and it's a tremendous amount. We've increased our staff, even with scaling back, if we need to, four or five paraprofessionals and one or two staff members, the numbers are still way up over the last two to three years. So we're not, you know, we're not looking to slash anywhere, we're trying to be as responsible as we possibly can and impact as few students as we possibly can. And it's difficult, nobody wants to make that decision, ever.
There was an article in the, I think it was in the Star Ledger, maybe it was just NJ.com, I don't know, this is not something that's just happening here in Highland Park.
No, and actually, that article kind of annoyed me because it was, you know, a lot's being framed around S2 and around the districts that are receiving less funding, and of course, totally sucks to be getting even less funding, but we're not in that category, we're not in the getting less funding category, we're supposedly in the yay for us, we got more funding, but in grand total, again, we talked about this last week, we got 180-something thousand dollars, almost 40 of it went straight to charter schools, another almost 40 of it came off the top for pre-K, somehow they decided you need less money for your pre-K students, so we got a grand total of an extra $100,000 from the state. That's our big windfall, and we're getting letters from our legislators saying, here I am, I'm fighting for you in Trenton. What? No. Fighting for us in Trenton would look a lot different than $100,000, so, you know...
I almost feel like we should be budgeting in, like, the salary to put a lobbyist down in Trenton.
Good luck with that.
So, I do have some numbers. So this year, Ms. Mitchell's first semester student load is 51 total, her second semester student load is 55 total across the class, for, for classes she teaches, that does not include Team Pep.
Five plus Team Pep, including Team Pep.
Okay, that didn't include Team Pep in this case, I was just focusing on the programming, you know, numbers. Last year, Ms. Mitchell's first period student load was 56, her second period student load was 75. So the numbers are going down, but that wasn't necessarily, that wasn't the deciding factor.
But one of the things that we do look at every year is undersubscribed classes, and it was the reason a couple of years ago for discontinuing Hebrew, was that the numbers just weren't there. When we see classes that have less than 10 students in them, we have to take a look at that, we just do, I mean...
And keep in mind, reflecting on some of the numbers that Darcy alluded to, since this new board and I and Lynn started the budget planning process fiscal year 16 budget was the first budget that we actually all worked on collaboratively, since that time, we have added 20, and that includes the riffing and elimination of teachers, this next year, we added 22 full-time staff between teachers and paraprofessionals, that's the net, so that's...
That's from 2015?
Since the 15, 16 budget, we've added 22 staff. That includes regular ed, special ed, paraprofessionals, an additional CST member, Regina Strager, the behaviorist, and that, and again, that includes any reductions in force of the last few years, as well as next year's reduction in forces, so...
20 makes sense.
And our student numbers haven't gone up drastically, they've gone up enough, though. I think what this reflects is the inordinate needs our special needs population particularly has, there's a lot of those FTEs, those full-time staff or paraprofessionals.
And frankly, I don't know how we're doing this, because with that, we're also getting these 8, 10, 12, 14% insurance increases every year, plus our contractual obligations, and when you add it all up, we can raise taxes 2 or 3 or 3.5%, and I, I mean, I sometimes sit at home at night going over numbers, which is what I like to do, and it's astonishing to me that we can get a budget out under these circumstances. And, and the board, as to the being sad about that program going away, no one on the board is happy about this. When we talked about this, we were, we were all pretty horrified, that's, that's where we have to go, and I would say emails are still going around amongst the finance committee about what can we do, because there is no joy here. It's where we're placed, the state could make a few simple changes, including in those changes might be a more rational look at what, what are reasonable increases for staff year over year, plus the cost of the insurance, and what does it mean you really should be raising taxes? And that number, probably shouldn't say this, is not 2%, it's higher, because it's virtually impossible to make these budgets balance with a tax increase like that.
Okay.
Virtually impossible.
I want to get back to Paul to comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Hunt, hello? Okay, I'm very nervous to be in front of a microphone, I'll make it short. I'm Christina, Christina Stocky, and I'm a teacher here, I'm a reading intervention teacher, but I really stand up here again because of what you have been talking about and the budget cut for the home economic position. I just, it just, I'm Italian, it's really a big thing in my family to cook and enjoy the cooking, and I, even if it's just a little plug from one other person to try to keep that program, I just felt, I'm going to go out of my comfort zone and come to a microphone, but I want to just tell you, my experience, I could not get my boys to, to want to cook, and although they have uncles and brothers and, I mean, uncles and cousins that cook, they wouldn't cook until they came to the home economic class, which was, it wasn't mandatory, but it was strongly suggested and really pushed, and I am so thankful because I would come home and my kids would be making all kinds of different rices, and, and of course, they were in high school, so I allowed them to do simple cooking like hard-boiled eggs, I could choose, but they were making amazing rice dishes and all kinds of things. I couldn't tell you my gratitude for the home economic class. To this day, my kids now have been inspired to cook, and I just know one of my students that were here in the special ed program, that was her dream is to go on to be a culinary, in the culinary arts, and it is an art, and it's an amazing art, and, so I hope you look at it like that, too, because it's an important art that gets missed, and a lot of these kids may, it might open up a world to them if they were just exposed to how to use the kitchen, because many parents don't cook anymore, and it's so much fun, really, it is so much fun, and it's a whole, like, hobby and art, too. And June's program, the GLOW program, is so amazing, they're learning this very important life skill, and if they don't have a kitchen, I mean, they won't understand even to do the basic, make an egg, you know, and helping cleaning, even if it's not the, even if they can't do the egg themselves one day, they're learning how to clean and put away, and, and their way around the kitchen. I'm just, I'm just like heartbroken that this is, I, I don't envy you at all, because I can't even imagine how you're going to try to fit this in, I mean, it could even cut me off, you know, one day, but, and I understand that, but I would hope that, you know, with my intervention program, you know, it's an extra, but home economics, I hope you don't think of it as like an extra, because it really is a very, very important thing to have for the specially, the GLOW kids, so that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Miss Stocky. Actually, that was something that we, emails that have gone around between the finance committee, is how that would impact the GLOW program and how that facility could potentially still be used, so that's, that is on our, is absolutely on our radar.
Sorry, just writing my ass.
Don't be sorry.
So I came here with a speech, sorry. My name's Uchachi Odi Kanwa, and I live in 14 Highland Avenue, so Highland Park, and one of my jobs at the school is I'm actually the student body president of our school, so I, one of my jobs there is to listen to the voices of concern that a lot of the students are giving, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the student body about the discontinuation of family consumer science departments and the termination of six paraprofessionals. As this news actually traveled through the high school, a lot of sadness and questioning on why this event is even happening has arisen, and the only answer I could really give was because of budget cuts, and a lot of people, including me, have, don't see, seen, see this as like a good answer. There are too many advantages of having a home economics department and more paraprofessionals around, without, without them, the student body will only suffer. Cutting teachers would certainly make Highland Park students less prepared for their future and less successful for our school and the future. When asking the opinion of some students on them, they said that, they said, and I quote, paras are one of the main reasons why I'm successful in large classes with one teacher, and I wouldn't have been successful, successful and barter without them. Paraprofessionals play some of the biggest roles in the life of the children and are absolutely essential to their learning. My other point is, with the loss of the department, students will miss out on an opportunity of classes to shape the rest of their lives, like many previous speaker, speakers have addressed, family consumer science teaches skills such as cleaning, healthy eating, child development, tailoring, and so much more, that is a life skill that a lot of kids need. I personally can say, for example, is that if I had never took in Ms. Mitchell's class in freshman year and following up to senior year, I would not step foot in my kitchen. I wouldn't know how to boil eggs, I wouldn't know how to even cook rice, I wouldn't know how to do anything in the kitchen, or even tailor my own clothes, or like, do anything that's a life skill that I'm going to need after I'm done with high school or move out of my house. And it builds school, it builds skills that students should know, and by removing that, it's only harming a lot of kids in our school. And my last point is, mainly addressing a lot of the problems that minority kids in our school have, specifically the African-American kids, is that there's only five African-American teachers here in Highland Park High School, and with the loss of a home economics department, we lose Ms. Mitchell, which is one of those fives. Not only is she a great teacher, but she's a great person whose students actually go to, to combine feelings that they have or just to talk to, and after talking to one of my senior classmates, an issue that she expressed to me, and I quote, Ms. Mitchell has been someone that I go to whenever I'm free, and she has shared with me her perspective of life and with experiences, I can honestly say that they have helped me during difficult times and made me a better person. So that's all I have to really say, for example, but...
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for sharing all of that. And I would love to, one thing that we talked about last week and that Dr. Taylor and Mr. Krieger and I are working on is to sit down and meet with our legislators about the issues that we're experiencing financially in terms of our budget. I would love to invite you, if you would like to, to attend that meeting with our legislators, so you can really get a better sense of kind of like this big global picture that we're, I, I know it's, it's hard to, I'm sure it's hard to make sense of for your fellow classmates, what, what a budget restriction like we're facing is like, but I would love for you to be able to have a deeper, a deeper sense of that, if that's something that would interest you. So I'll have, Dr. Taylor reach out to you about that.
Hi, my name is June Miller, I am a special education teacher at the high school, this is my 15th year with the Highland Park School District. I am very proud to say that I have been teaching the GLOW program since its inception. I'm speaking tonight because I am very concerned about the adverse effect that I believe the elimination of the home economics program will have on the GLOW program. As you know, a primary focus of the GLOW program is to teach the students independent living and transition skills to use when they leave high school. Many of the students in the program are students who have either returned to district after spending several years in out-of-district placements, or students whose parents have considered sending them to out-of-district placements. I have attended almost every IEP meeting for the students in this program. In order to encourage the parents to keep the students in our district, the differences between the program we offer here at Highland Park and out-of-district placements are discussed. The deciding factor in keeping these students here is our ability to demonstrate to the parents that we offer everything and more that the out-of-district placements offer. Our home economics program is almost always brought up as an integral part of our program. It is probably the most frequently requested elective by the parents of the GLOW students. Without this program, I do not know how we will be able to persuade parents that our program is superior to those of the out-of-district placements. Additionally, Teri Mitchell has been an absolutely invaluable resource to me. As part of the GLOW program, I have planned several brunches, bake sales, et cetera. Teri has given up her free time to assist us and share the knowledge that only someone who has experience teaching this subject could have, and I'm going to digress from my speech, just to add, nothing to me to have a dinner in my house, 25 people, I love it, I can cook for it, doing it and teaching it are not the same thing. I sympathize with the difficult decisions that the board must make in creating a budget, I truly, truly do. However, I also believe that the elimination of the home economics program will, one, result in a decline in the quality of the program we offer in our district, and, two, result in additional out-of-district special education costs, as it will be much more difficult to prove to parents that we can offer the same program in our school as the out-of-district placements also are able to offer. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your input.
Dan Mladnik, teacher at the middle schools, Global Civics, and resident 216 Graham Street. I want to just share with you how I got to know Ms. Mitchell. It's kind of funny, every year we do the eighth grade Model UN, and on that morning, I go to Stop &amp; Shop, and I'm getting all sorts of groceries, you know, to, to feed the staff, the high schoolers that come there, and every year, it's, it's like, it's so funny, but every year, I run into Ms. Mitchell there at like 6:30 in the morning, and she's getting a big basket of stuff, and, and I don't know if she does it every day, because I only do this once a year, I'm not usually at Stop &amp; Shop at 6:30 in the morning, but, but it's like clockwork, I like plan on seeing her, and now it's like a running joke that we have, but, you know, kind of, kind of shows me a little bit about her commitment. But the other thing I wanted to say about Ms. Mitchell is she was on the committee of teachers with me and several other teachers for the restorative practices training, and we really bonded as a group, and she just really impressed me. She was just such a positive and insightful presence on that committee. I can't speak to, you know, I was never in her classroom as a student, but in that committee, I was really impressed with her, and I really, really appreciated everything that she brought to the committee. Had a, you know, and so, I guess my heart goes out to her, because, you know, I know she's got like 16 years in, and she's, and I haven't heard negative things about her, you know, I have a positive experience with her, and, and just to kind of see... You know, I have a positive experience with her and, and just to kind of see, you know, I know it's a very difficult position to be in and I don't envy you at all, but it's, it's also, I don't envy her. And it's hard for me to see where she can go. You know, if I were cut right now, who's going to hire me? So, so I, I just feel for her. So just on a human level, you know, it's, it's difficult. And I thought she was so gracious in the way that she handled, like in her speech that she gave, I thought it was very gracious and so I'm concerned about her. One thought came to mind. In the prior district that I was at, they had a culinary program there and they actually, I think, made money off of it. Like they turned it into kind of a, like the, the man who was running it was a chef. He was a former chef and he was teaching the, the other students to be, his students to be chefs. And he didn't have a lot of students, but they made these amazing dishes and we all bought them. So, and, and they were making money. And so anyway, I'm just wondering if any, if there's any possibility for revamping the program to actually bring in revenue and to try to offset some of the costs or something like that.
I like that thinking, Dan.
Yeah.
I mean, we are trying to come up with this therapeutic program that, you know, would bring students in from other districts. I wonder if there's some way, this special education program, I wonder if there's some way that it could be melded with that somehow. I don't know.
Be at the lower grades.
Oh, that's right. You're right. Oh, wait. Is that right? It's not, okay. It's just Bartle and Irving? Or Bartle. It's Bartle. Right, okay. My apologies.
I also like that idea. I'd like to talk about that more another time.
Keith Presti, President of the HPEA. I just wanted to give the board a bit of an update since last week when I spoke about some of the concerns from middle and high school staff about some of the discipline issues. So I met with Scott and Darcy last Wednesday and we did have a good conversation about that where I did share a lot of the concerns that were brought to us. Some of those are the feelings of being unsupported, perceived lack of consequences, and the concern over the proper implementation of restorative practices. Darcy asked me to go back to the staff and see if we could identify clusters of behaviors. So I would just like to say that we did that. The staffs met today and we're meeting again, Darcy, Scott and I, on Wednesday and I'll be presenting that information to you so we can continue the conversation. And I also met with the Bartle staff today. There's been a lot of discussion lately about the social emotional learning program that we did have and that kind of went away and is kind of coming back. But I would just like to make a few points about that and also how it relates to responsive classroom, which is the program that we say we're doing at Bartle. But just to give you some numbers, the social emotional learning lab, which is what we call a tier two, is right now servicing about 47 students. I think we have somewhere around 500 in the building. So the SEL practices that we used to have, we would call a tier one. So that's all of the preventative and, and, you know, that would be direct instruction on different skills, the SEL skills. And, you know, infusing that into the classroom and how people teach and how they interact with their students. We had a presentation today and it was kind of nostalgic where they were talking about best and listening position and, you know, all of the 525 and the keep calm and, you know, that used to be, we were just, that was just ingrained in us when we started. I mean, every beginning, there would be a committee, they would meet over the summer, they would discuss it, what are we going to work on at the beginning of the year. Everybody was presented with the same materials. Everybody had the same posters in their classroom. Everybody had the same worksheets, the hassle logs, the FIG test bin, you know, everyone developed a keep calm area. You know, we, the, the skills were actually taught through direct instruction, especially in the health program. So we, you know, and we used to be a beacon for SEL. And, and it's not anybody who's here right now, but it went away.
But Vicky Potobeki went away and it went away. It was my, was my perception from.
Well, and, and a former superintendent who did not necessarily care or agree with that.
A bunch of things got broken.
Dwindled and it went away. When Vicky left, that was it. So I do think, bringing back the lab is great. I do think we have to spend the majority of our time discussing tier one, direct instruction. And, you know, responsive classroom is great and it is an, it is an SEL program. And some, but there's only four teachers in this building that have been trained in responsive classroom, the real training, which is like a four-day training. So that, I think that's something we have to look at. We, if we're going to use responsive classroom as our tier one, then everybody needs to be trained in it. We all need to be speaking the same language again. We all have to have the same resources again. And, you know, and then the, the lab and some of the other things are, you know, where a student who might not be getting it at that tier one level can be referred for extra, you know, support in that. And, and my bigger point is that problems with behavior and decision-making and all those things didn't just start at the middle and high school. And they start here and at Irving. And so we have to really look all the way down and, and really beef up our program here. And I do know that, you know, there's a lot of teachers at Irving that love responsive classroom as well, but I think there's plenty of opportunities that we can, we have lots of PLCs, we have building level PDs, we bring in outside consultants all the time for other things. There, every PLC, every building level professional development should be focused on this. You know, I know there's a lot of other things that, you know, we have to attend to as well. But if we're really going to be serious and say, this is, we're going to be responsive in the lower grades and we're going to be restorative in the upper grades, then I think we really have to step up our game. And I'm happy to continue to talk about in ways that we can do that. But I think, you know, sometimes the frustration from the staff comes from, we can't just say it, we have to do it. So, and, and, you know, and, and people are more than willing to do it. People are like, I still have that stuff in some way or some other way. You know what I mean? Like.
When that was so strong at Bartle, I don't remember. Was that also, was that same language and the same philosophy at Irving as well?
No.
Yes. From a former Irving teacher, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. No, and I, you know, you and I have talked about this. I remember, like, I still, I, I carried 525 with me and used it with my littles, you know, from what I had learned with my stepkids because that came home even. So, I mean, it, you're right. It was absolutely just this inherent integral part of being a Bartle student.
It's just what we did.
Right, exactly. It was what you did and it came home with the kids. Like the kids actually even brought it home and used it at home. So I couldn't agree with you more that on that tier one is where we want to be reaching all of our students.
And we happen to have a committee that started two months ago called the Social Emotional Learning Community made up of guidance counselors throughout the school district and our support staff like Juliana, who are specifically looking at that, going back to that tier one model because, and frankly, you know what, it wasn't so much me, Tracy Maiden, Anthony Benjamin, as it was two of Maurice Elias's interns who helped redirect us. Remember, this program came out of Maurice Elias's lab way back when, thanks to Vicky Potobeki. So Maurice assigned two interns just to help get us back to that place. Remember, this is the first year we fully implemented the lab again. We started in the last half of second year. So it's a rebuilding effort, but Keith, you're totally on spot, right on. And it's definitely a work in progress.
Can I? Like, sorry.
I would just like to point out again, too, that when we're moving away from out-of-school suspensions, that this is where we really need to be focusing because if we beef up in-school suspension, which I think we should call it something else, but if we beef up in-school suspension and what a child will do during the day when they're in-school suspended, you know, that's another golden opportunity to work with. If a student ends up in in-school suspension, they clearly need to do some work on their social emotional learning. So that's where we should be focusing some of our attention as well. And instead of, you know, just having them sitting in a room all day, listen, I don't really know what happens in in-school suspension, but it, sitting a room, sitting at home, just working on some worksheet that, you know, you have to give work when they're in in-school suspension, you know, that would be the time they should be working on these skills as well.
We're on, we're on the same page.
Yes.
Could not agree more.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. I just quickly wanted to say, like, my memory as a parent, and now I have a senior and a sophomore and an eighth grader, is that the Irving, the Irving experience wasn't as consistent with their SEL. It was there. It was clearly there, but I remember, you know, Bartle being the place where it was on a daily basis, the kids would come home with 525 and all that stuff. Like my husband, when I get upset, will say, Michelle, 525. Like that's the, that's the kind of thing, it's, you know, in my house too. But, so in the middle school, that was then no longer a thing.
You know, a lot of it has.
No, I just wanted to say that from my memory, I don't remember it being as distinct in Irving as it was in Bartle. Bartle was absolutely every single year, every single classroom.
I think a lot of it has to do.
It's like you never left.
Let me say one thing, Keith.
Keith Presti.
No. I think a lot of it has to do with the principal. Kelly Freeborn was wholly committed to responsive classroom. I mean, I think you knew that. She was like a specialist in that area. She was even serving as a consultant. It's incumbent upon the principal ultimately to shape the culture of the school building. And if responsive classroom is going to be built in this building, we need to make it a systemic effort. I totally agree that it's not happening the way it should. Responsive classroom in particular.
And just, I mean, just listening to Michelle and some, what other people said, you know, using it yourself, your, your, your kids are bringing it home. I mean, that's another wonderful opportunity to include the parents in all of this and working with their children and also themselves, like, like you're saying, like, all of those skills are something we all need to be able to do anyway. And sometimes it's a good reminder of how maybe we can handle situations for ourselves. So what an opportunity to bring the parents in as well and the community and, and the students and all work on this together as a community.
Bring it on.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other public comment? Nope. Okay. So we are going to move on to our board action items. Michelle, would you like to move the curriculum and instruction items, please?
Sure. Sorry about that. I would like to move items one through four.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just wanted to point out that Mark, you and Keith have touched base on whatever negotiations issues there are related to us approving the English 11.
We've scheduled a meeting, in fact, today.
Okay.
I don't know if we all got back, but I think we may have a date for early April.
Okay. So we're all good moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Fabulous. All right. I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Nope. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Yes.
Okay. Mark, could you please move the financing facilities items for us, please?
Yes. I believe that we're going to table till next month, the Young Audience Arts for Learning.
Correct.
So I'll move items one through 26 with the exception of that subitem on number 10.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. All right. Seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel and communication. Ann, could you please move those items?
Yes. I'd like to move items one through 25, including the amendments that I read into number 25.
Fabulous. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I can make one correction.
Yep.
On item number 23, the dates should read September 3, 2019 to April 30, 2020.
Oh, yeah.
Good point.
Good catch.
Whoops.
Okay. Is there a second? Did we already do this?
I seconded.
Oh, sorry. All right. Any other discussion?
Other than our correction?
Nope. Okay. Seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, Mark, could you move those, our one policy item, please?
Yeah. I'd like to move item one.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Yes.
Okay. So that brings us to our liaison reports. I noticed that there was a, an agenda in the folder for the municipal drug and alcohol alliance, albeit not terribly illuminating, but.
There's also one for library.
Ah, okay. Yes, I saw both of those in there. Mr. Krieger, anything from any of your various.
No, I have nothing.
Okay. I did notice, I just happened to notice on Facebook that there seems to be a volunteer meeting for HPTV folks coming up, although I don't remember what the date of that was. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I think they're trying to.
Get some more volunteers. Get more, get more flesh, fresh blood in there.
Yes.
It's, it's a tough.
There's been one very, very busy person for a lot of years.
Yes, there's one remarkably dedicated. Thank you, Gary Leslie. Anyone watching us at home on TV, thank Gary Leslie because if it were not for Gary Leslie, he would not be watching us on TV.
That's true.
And he needs some help. So please, help Gary Leslie.
Hashtag.
We're going to start our own hashtag, our own social media hashtag for Gary Leslie. Rob, Magaziner, anything from the Ed Foundation? Other than all the wonderful things that we just approved this evening?
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, and I think there actually are even a couple of additional ones that they're considering right now. I don't know if those have found their way in, but.
Two emails, I think, came through today.
Yeah.
So they'll be on the next one.
They'll be on the next one. So the big thing, I think, right around this time of year is the spring fundraiser. So that is going to be May 11th. That's at the Center School Gym. It's going to be a casino night, which has been done before, but.
Those are, oh, watch out. Mr. Krieger's there. Wait, there's not, there isn't going to be any money left over once Mark's done.
So, you know, all things gambling, that's what they're talking about and they will, it'll be a good, good night, I'm sure. it'll be a good, good night, I'm sure. There'll be food and I believe there is also beverage.
Wait, May 11th? Oh, yeah, if that's...
May 11th, yeah, I have a conflict, but...
I have a conflict too, now I'm sad.
Right. Anyway, folks should be looking in their mail for the invites and, you know, on social media, et cetera, et cetera, so.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Good night, Avery.
Good night, Avery.
Ann, anything from the Commission for Universal Access?
No, apparently the meetings are on Mondays. I just learned the head commissioner, the commissioner, the head of the commission, has indicated that hopefully come June or July, they are going to reschedule meetings so that board members are able to attend. And I have not yet received any agendas for those meetings, but hopefully soon.
Okey-dokey. As Scott mentioned, there's an agenda in our, yeah, an agenda in the folder for the last public library meeting. And I don't have anything for shared services. Once again, the town commission that never meets. Ruth, still no CPAC?
No.
I'm wondering if until, like, CPAC reemerges or comes back to life, if, would you be interested in maybe attending PTO meetings?
Sure.
Maybe that would be, you know, at least there'd be something there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, would that be, all right, so maybe you and I should talk about that.
Sure.
Because I was excited that, you know, when we were planning our budget meetings the last couple of years, we tried to have PTO meetings and we try to have our own, you know, host our own meeting, you know, with the PTO and then nobody comes and it's kind of sad. So this time Scott reached out to, you know, the PTOs, I think, just kind of like in general to find out, you know, if there was already a meeting scheduled that we could just crash, you know, so that there would automatically be people there, you know, because the whole point is, you know, we want to talk to people. We don't want to just talk to an empty room. We can, we do that here most of the time. So, but it would be nice to have a little bit more interaction with the PTOs. Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
Awesome, thanks. I have one every once in a while. Monique, do you have anything for us from Post hoc?
I don't. There was a meeting early in February and I think what happened was I was absent at the board meeting where I would have discussed that meeting. And unfortunately, I don't have those notes handy. But one of the highlights from that meeting is that Post hoc is planning or thinking about, I think they are going to do it, commemorating the anniversary of desegregation by having a, putting together a forum. And they want to make it an intergenerational forum where it would be like having students now that have, that attend schools have conversations with
Oh, cool.
former Highland Park students who were around at the time of desegregation and, you know, comparing then and now. And I thought that was really a cool idea. So they're looking to just kind of do some research and get that together. They want to have artifacts out in the room, still looking at the historical commission of artifacts that they have and bringing that to the table as well. And I believe the target is to have that in the early fall. So that's exciting. And then the other piece, and I wish I had the date on me, I'll have to broadcast that in the next meeting, they are going to coordinate with the teen center for another diversity dinner.
Awesome.
Potluck dinner, so I will have more information on that at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Ann, anything from the Human Relations Commission?
Yes, we met, the commission met, I'm sorry, March 20th. There's nothing specifically school-related, but there are a couple of interesting presentations coming up on April 8th. If anybody who is interested should go to the, if you go to Facebook and search up Highland Park Borough Human Relations Commission, you'll see the Facebook page with events. But there's a presentation on April 8th at 7:00 PM at Borough Hall. It is, excuse me, sorry, it's called Lynchings Through the Eyes of Artists. It's a presentation by Daniel, Donald Beatham, who is a commission member. It's just what it sounds about. It's about lynching as it was memorialized by artists. It's not necessarily appropriate for younger children, but, you know, parents can decide that on their own. Let's see, fortunately, I think we have since missed the other two presentations. But April, April 8th at 7:00 PM is the Lynchings Through the Eyes of Artists. And there's going, I'm sorry, there's going to be, they're planning, I think it's tentative at this point, a June 19th cookout on June 19th, if I have that date correct. And I'll present more information about that when I have it. That'd be for the whole community to come and maybe do some different cultural performances and things.
All right, thank you. Michelle, do you have anything from the Board of Health?
Yes, so the Board of Health met in the 14th and a couple of different things. There's a resolution that the council is putting forward to our state legislature that would remove the religious exemptions for vaccinations. So that more children hopefully would be vaccinated. So we had a discussion about that and I had just happened to listen to a really interesting podcast about measles, which was eradicated pretty much in 2013, but has since come back. And it's been in pockets where children are not vaccinated, mainly due to religious exemptions. So the Board of Health had to give their permission, you know, or, you know, support or not to this resolution and they did support it. Everyone there did support it. Also, they talked about the Sustainable HP Earth Day coming up. And the focus of Earth Day this year is air quality, being that we have a town that has plenty of people driving and plenty of people walking. Air quality is an issue that all of us are concerned about and idling came up. And I remember we used to get reminders from the kids in the schools about, like, idling beyond three minutes was against the law and, you know, so they talked about ticketing. And it was just, it was good to remind everyone of that. And so any ideas that anyone has about air quality that we could be discussing, they would be happy to hear about ideas for Earth Day. Also, they mentioned that there are drop boxes available for people that have prescriptions that are outdated or medication that needs to be disposed of.
Is there one in town?
That's great.
There are actually two.
Really?
Yes.
I drove all the way up Ryder's Lane because I didn't know there was one in town.
I know, so apparently, and just so happens, I went to pick up my prescription at Rite Aid and a little insert was in there with all the paperwork.
Who could go through all that?
Right, I just...
You're a saint if you went through all that.
Well, I did. So St. Michelle saw that there was a slip of paper in there about Dropbox at Rite Aid and safe drugs. Stop it. No questions asked, you just drop it. Yeah.
Does this include?
Where is it?
Does this include needles?
I don't believe it includes equipment.
The one I went to, all the way up Ryder's Lane, no, it's not needles, it's just prescriptions.
But they, they can have them. When I was attending those meetings, they were discussing needles as well. Would they, you don't know if they...
That didn't come up. We didn't talk about medical equipment of any kind, it was purely prescription drugs.
Purely prescription.
Yes, so...
That's great, that's something all parents should know.
All parents should know that.
Yeah, it's a great way to get that stuff out of your house. That's what I was looking to do. Like, there was stuff in my house, I needed to get rid of it, where do you put it? And when I looked it up, nothing in Highland Park came up.
Right, and, and that's what the Board of Health was discussing, how to get the word out about that. So Rite Aid was on the ball because I literally picked up my prescription a couple of days ago and it was in there already, the little insert. Yeah, so that's good to know. And clean out your medicine cabinets, it's spring cleaning time. Also, they talked about climate change and outreach, wellness and mental health. And those things took no time at all because it felt like such a massive discussion, but it was all lumped into the concept of Earth Day. So they, they really are trying very hard to come up with lots of great ideas about getting the word out through Earth Day, through that one activity. One more thing they talked about was fluoridation of our water. And currently, we are not fluoridated. But we will be.
Really?
That is the plan. And so they are, right now, looking, I think what they're doing is looking at different providers, but as far as the decision to go ahead with that, I think that that is decided.
Interesting.
Yes, so that is everything that I have from the Board of Health.
Well, that's pretty juicy.
Not bad, right?
Nice work.
Good job.
Uh, thank you for that. We don't have Rob here for Green Team. I think Mark has already established that he has nothing from cable TV advisory. I have nothing for Delegate to New Jersey School Boards. Next meeting, next delegate assembly is in May, so for the next meeting, I'll find out. I think we've probably missed any deadlines or whatever to submit anything, so. But I don't know that we have anything pressing right now, anyway. And Rob's not here for Middlesex County School Boards, although I haven't, I usually pay attention to those emails and I haven't seen anything terribly interesting come across. Oh, but, which does remind me, one thing you and I talked about in terms of the budget, and this isn't a massive line item, but the two of us, I think, discussed it when we were at Workshop in October, maybe all four of us did. Remember, I can't remember who I was with when we talked to somebody, you were definitely there, Rob, when we talked to somebody from the National School Boards, School Boards Association?
I was there.
Right, and then we learned that, like, we are, Highland Park is one of, like, very few districts in the state that is part of, you know, a member of the National School Boards Association. And we all kind of went like, oh, well, that's interesting. Do we pay for that? Because, like, as far as I can tell, all we get for that is a bunch of emails that I don't necessarily need and, you know, I mean, I think we all do our part locally and on the state level and I don't know that being a part of the National School Boards Association gets us much. So I think we were all kind of in agreement, like, there's a few thousand dollars we can save. So if that hasn't come out of the budget, we'll take that out of the budget and...
I read those maybe monthly. One a month, maybe, if it's interesting.
The one time we were, New Jersey was part of the headline, it was wrong. And I had to go back and forth with the woman who sends the emails and say, um, that was wrong. The way you framed that was totally wrong. And then I found out that it's just a subscript, like, a service, they like farm that out to somebody else. So I'm like, you know, we're good, we don't need those emails.
It's pulling news that you can get elsewhere, it's not...
As, as passionate as I am about these issues, I'm not about to get involved with the National School Boards Association, so I think we're good.
Yeah, she was a lucky woman.
Yeah, a few thousand dollars we can save for something else.
If we're paying that we shouldn't.
Yeah, no, we are. I was, like, stunned to realize that we're paying for that.
It does sound really outdated in the age of the internet.
Blame this on...
Well, there's a podcast that's part of it also, I guess, but supposedly.
Again, I'm good.
Right.
So, well, as we go forward, we'll make sure that...
We're looking at it on this computer, yes, it's like $2,700?
I'll take the $2,370.
Do we, all right, I mean, committed to it?
Put it in the kitty.
Yeah, I think we're all, I think we're all okay with that. Unless there's something you think from your perspective that it...
I don't know anything about it. So I would think first we would want to make sure that we're not losing something that we need.
Right.
But I don't know.
We've never used them for anything that I know of and all we get are the emails.
Yeah, I don't really know.
Okay.